Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, May 1st, Labor Day. Would you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Schottke, can you please take the roll?
Absolutely. All right, Reverend Mathias.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Schottke here. Ms. Slade.
Here.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Grant.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
President Faub.
Present.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
It's all moved.
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. No celebrations tonight and no student representative to the board, so do we have public comment for board agenda items?
We do not.
All right, moving right along, secretary's report.
Great, just a few items this evening. I hope that you will plan to attend the annual State of Our Schools address presented by our superintendent, Teresa Weatherall Neal, on Thursday, May 4 at 6:00 p.m. at GRPS University. GRPS University is located at 1400 Fuller Avenue Northeast. Doors will open at 5:00 p.m. and light refreshments will be served. You can RSVP today by calling 819-2193 or emailing Dana in the superintendent's office at B I A L K D at GRPS.org. The 2017 Citywide Arts Show is taking place May 8 through 24 at the Western Michigan Conference Center located at 200 Ionia Avenue Southwest. Gallery hours will be 8:00 a.m. Monday through Thursday and 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Friday. There will also be two public receptions for GRPS families and friends. Those will be held first on May 9 from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for K-5 and K-8 and center based programs, and then on May 10 at 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for GRPS secondary schools and all non-public schools. Lastly, the Ad Hoc Policy Committee meeting, which was regularly scheduled for May 9 at 1:00 p.m., is going to be moved, but we still have to settle on a date, so that'll be communicated after tonight. Thank you.
Committee chair updates. Reverend Mathias?
Well, our committee met April 18th and we were able to talk about the social-emotional learning presentation there and where the district is heading at more comprehensively. Really exciting to hear that it's really going to tie our feeder schools together in terms of the themes and obviously the appropriate grade and child focus, so I think we're excited about that. We also had a presentation on some of our, I'm drawing a blank, I'm sorry.
Test score stuff.
Yeah, test scores.
Yeah, the district-wide achievement scores, and again, we had a real lively discussion there that was very profitable, so good meeting.
Questions for Reverend Mathias?
Test scores looking good?
You know, they're growing slightly and it's progressing, and so obviously we would like to see jumps, but in terms of where we have been and where we are, we're making a lot of progress as a district, so that's really exciting.
Which scores were shared? Was it the NWEA or the MSAT?
Yeah, the NWEA scores and then some of the trends that were there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Reverend Mathias? Ms. Schottke?
Well, the Ad Hoc Policy Committee met in April and our work was really focused in two areas. One, to bring the first reading of the social-emotional policy, which we did at the last meeting, board meeting, and tonight we'll have our second reading of that policy. And then we spent quite a bit of time working through board policies to just do some review of what's there, to work to continue to consolidate and reduce redundancies in policy, and so this evening, as you look for in your agenda, you will see that we've done that, eliminated a few policies, combined them elsewhere. I think probably it'd be most helpful if maybe if I give a description before each vote and then we can go through it that way. That's my report.
You were going to say something else about that?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Just to my fellow board members this evening, we are, I am going to make a motion later to pull bylaw 1150 board officers. We've had some discussion about the election policy that was pulled into that. We want to just clean up some language there, bring it back to ad hoc policy for one more review, so just a note that I'll pull that one when we get to bylaw 1150. Thank you.
Any questions for John? Ms. Schottke? Dr. Baker?
We actually, I think I'm going to ask if it's okay with you to bring Larry Oberst up to discuss. We had a really good discussion. There is, as we end the academic year and head into figuring out our budget next year, there's a lot of big ifs still out there, and so that we'll know within the next three weeks and it'll impact a lot of decisions. So that's the major issue that I wanted to make sure everybody's aware of in terms of the upcoming timeline. The other thing is that we're going to have a public hearing in June, and there's so many big things that could impact where we're at within the next couple of weeks that I wanted to make sure that Larry explained to everybody what the timeline was coming up, so.
Thank you. Big vote tomorrow. So I encourage you all to get to the polls and vote tomorrow because that will have an impact on our 1718 budget process. So, as Dr. Baker said, as we wind down toward the end of this fiscal year, the next really 60 days from a finance perspective continues to get really, really busy. A lot of things need to get done before year-end. As you know, this board needs to approve the 1718 budget by June 30th of this year. Our plan right now is the Finance Committee meeting on May 22nd. We will bring a draft of the 1718 budget that we hope is in, well, we'll bring it to this week, have it in great shape for you to look at, the board to look, or the committee to look at, and hopefully approve, or if they have some additional changes, we certainly can address those also. The other big item that we'll bring to the Finance Committee meeting on the 22nd will be Amendment 2 to the current year, the 15, or I'm sorry, the 1617 budget. We're putting that together right now, and there are enough changes between our last amendment and now that a Second Amendment will be appropriate. We'll bring that to the Finance Committee on the 22nd also. Our plan would then be to bring both of those items to the full board on the board meeting on the June 5th, which is the first board meeting of June, and hopefully for your approval. At some point in time, we'll discuss the exact timing of how we want this to roll, but I know over the years, we've usually had a, we have to have a public hearing. Usually that has occurred just prior to the board meeting to approve the budget, but sometimes that could happen ahead of time and the budget could be approved at a subsequent board meeting. So we'll discuss that as we get to that 22nd date. There are still some outstanding issues out there that will impact the 1718 budget, as you're aware. As I just mentioned, the millage election tomorrow will have an impact on the 1718 budget, and as you're well aware, the state budget has not, for next year, has not yet been finalized. The revenue estimating conference is scheduled for May 17th. That's when they look at the final revenue estimates, and that will serve as a basis to finalize the 1718 budget. As I presented last month, all three branches of government now have their, or bodies of government have their proposals in. They've been working in conference committee to reconcile some of this, the differences, but the final budget won't occur until sometime after May 17th. It's always the governor's objective to get that budget finalized by June 1st, so we'll see where things stand. Again, we still hope to have a budget amendment, or budget draft on the 22nd, but if there are some significant things that are still up in the air at that point in time, then we may have to delay it a week or so, but, so there's some moving parts, but right now we're trying to get everything done on the 22nd and then into the board meeting on June to finalize everything, so. Questions? That'll process.
It looks like the superintendent is going to discuss the millage later, but just real quick, the number of how much the vote tomorrow, how it means per year?
Right now, it's about, estimated about $3.5 million annually for the next 10 years that would come into the district. And again, unlike the bond millages, this is, could be used and will be used for operating purposes into the classrooms.
So, big dates is tomorrow, three and a half, the May 17th, ask how much money, the revenue, and then hopefully get a sense where we're at the following week, but maybe not until June.
Totally.
So, big questions up in the air that end up impacting us, and so, and then we will discuss at the May 22nd what the public hearing should look like, hopefully knowing where things are at.
So, when is the public hearing scheduled for again?
We haven't finalized the date. Again, that'll depend on how things fall out on the 22nd, but either could happen on the June 5th meeting, again, I think it's for you and Dr. Baker to determine, either before, prior to the June 5th board meeting, we have a 15-minute public hearing, or it could wait to the following board meeting also, on the 19th, regularly scheduled board meeting. Everything just has to be done, as I said, approved by you by the end of the month, so we want to get it to you as early as we can, so in case there are some changes, those kinds of things, we can get those revised, get it back to the board in time, so.
Yeah, I realize you're under such a compacted thing with so many things up in the air between the election and the...
Well, again, as you know, we've been working diligently on the expense side, which we know and can estimate, but we, it's always a revenue side, we wait till the end, and again, we'll know tomorrow evening, hopefully at 10 o'clock or so, what the enhancement millage looks like, which will help the big state budget. As you recall, there could be some significant, significant impact differently, whether it's more the governor's budget versus a senate-type thing, so we may have to go back pending that budget, go back and adjust our expenses, so.
So I guess I'm just a little bit sensitive, I guess I would prefer, you know, I don't want to speak to everybody in the board, but prefer that that hearing maybe came later in June so that the board would have an opportunity as a whole, after the Finance Committee, to have a chance to be exposed to the budget proposal before the hearing. Does that make sense? So if the board was able to be presented with the budget on June 5 post-Finance Committee, and then the hearing would be before the next board meeting in June, and the board would vote.
And we did discuss as the Finance Committee, bringing the budget to the work session so that we could just dive into it a little bit deeper and so that the board could have a full understanding.
That's an option too.
Depending on how those dates fall.
So really, we want to discuss at the May 22nd meeting what the public hearing should look at, because we don't really know what we'll know, for one, and then secondly, you know, best case scenario, everything comes through, it might be, you know, we could go, but if there, if we feel like, if the Finance Committee feels that we need public input as well, you know, then we would want to do it, kind of opposite, so I think that. So why don't we go to the May 22nd and discuss, and then I can discuss with you and the superintendent and see what that looks like.
And as I told the Finance Committee, if between now and the 22nd, other issues come up that impact our ability to get what I'm going to call a draft, a final draft budget on the 22nd, then certainly we'll let them know, we may have to adjust the dates appropriately, but right now we're trying to shoot for the 22nd. Gives us that flexibility of June to deal with the public hearing and the full board, so.
That's great.
Make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Any questions or concerns from the rest of the board? Did you have another item?
Oh, no, I, although, actually, no, I do not at this time, but I noticed something in the consent agenda I want to change, but we'll wait till then.
All right, great, thank you. Mr. Oberst?
Actually, wait, actually, there was one other item.
Okay. You knew what?
Yeah, Ken, because we, I mean, Ken loves the stage so much, I don't want to...
Ken is hoping you forgot.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, appreciate it.
He's just hanging it up.
You got, you know, your 15 minutes of fame last way longer than you thought, so.
We could dim the lights on a little bit, um, to explain. Dr. Baker asked me to share the architectural renderings for the Museum High School. Just to give you a perspective, this is the building that we will be renovating for the high school itself. The front door is here, and then we did purchase this parking lot from the City of Grand Rapids, which we'll use for construction as a staff lot. We are doing very little to the exterior of the building. We have the front doors off and salvaged to be reinstalled. The building is not designated historic, but it is historical from the standpoint, it is the last building constructed under Franklin Roosevelt's WPA program. So we have committed to the neighborhood that our intent is to keep it. The only exterior changes, on the back wall, we have to cut some additional doors into that. The floor, the main floor plan, again, the front door is here, the changes that will be made is as visitors come in, there'll be a secure entry here and routing any visitors through the office for controlled access, so we have the office here. This tan area is a design lab. We're still working on all the equipment that would go in there. Kitchen, small, what's being called a bistro, we really don't have room for a full cafeteria. We'll have some eating area and then throughout the building, the backside in the gray is receiving, restrooms, elevator. Up in this area, the yellowish, is the artifact lab with access from the artifact storage into a work area and a laboratory area, a multipurpose space that could be used for classroom, could be used for music, a number of things. Storage back here, and then a health office, and then the great hall will remain functionally as it is, will resurface, and there'll be a new ceiling put in it, but it will stay essentially the same. On the second floor, balcony goes around, the stairways stay intact. Again, we have restrooms, elevator on this edge. The darker brown are more traditional classrooms, and then the lighter areas are more open collaboration spaces. This would be the great hall from the front entry doors. We will have the capability to hang some lighter weight items from it. There's a fair amount of glass as it goes into the classrooms, yet we retain the ability to lock down in an emergency. This would be from the opposite end of the great hall, looking back towards the front This is a rendering of the artifact lab. Another rendering of the design lab. Open collaborative areas. And classroom. Now, this does show different types of furniture, and that's still to be determined exactly what's, what goes in a classroom to make it the most flexible as possible.
May I ask, where, is there going to be a place like an auditorium or an area where all the kids are going to be able to fit for any kind of meetings or anything? Nothing?
To go back to, we had to work within the footprint of the existing building. Potentially, everybody could sit together in the great hall. This building will hold 360 students, but certain things like a true auditorium will have to be done outside the footprint.
It's exciting.
Awesome. Really exciting. Are they keeping your, your stages of reproduction, Tony, that you always talk about?
I think they're getting rid of that. I guess they're going to teach it in other ways.
We grew up with that.
Very nice.
Thank you, really. I saw some steelcase furniture in the renderings. Is that indicative of anything, except?
No.
No, no. Got it. Really, when is expected completion?
We have started demolition, and we will be open to function August of 2018.
Very exciting.
We haven't missed a start yet.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarity, it may be steelcase, but we're not there.
Right, right. Got it.
We'll go through the bidding process.
Right. It's all right.
Okay, superintendent's report.
Dr. Faub, members of the board, I'd like to ask John Hemmelt to come forward to talk about our big day tomorrow.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm to the board, Superintendent Weatherall Neal. Yep, it's the big day, it's the election eve, and tomorrow is the big vote on the .9 mil enhancement millage that will generate $211 per pupil, $3.5 million for Grand Rapids Public Schools, 100% of which is dedicated to the classroom. We have been out, there's been door-to-door, extensive calls, mailings, social media, and just a really big push here to really raise awareness about what this vote is all about, what the, how the dollars are going to be invested, and this is really our first shot at having a reliable, stable source of local revenue. You know, we heard a lot from Mr. Oberst about some of the uncertainties from the federal level to the state level, and this is why more and more of the ISD and school districts are turning to these regional enhancement millages to try to bring some stability and some sanity back to our funding. This will be dedicated to the classroom, and this is not just GRPS, it's all 20 school districts in the ISD. The vote, polls open 7:00 a.m. tomorrow, they close at 8:00 p.m. tomorrow, and there's a little event at Brand's Steakhouse on Leonard at 8:00 for election night results, if you want to come join us.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
John? No. It's just in case.
Okay, we have several first reading of policies, so I will ask for motion in second, and then Ms. Schottke's going to give a little explanation, and then there'll be time for deliberation or debate, and then we'll call the vote. So do I have a motion for approval of the first reading of policy 7020?
Actually, the second reading.
Oh, second reading. Oh, there you go, right. Second reading.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion, this one, I guess we've already gone over, so.
That's correct.
Any discussion or deliberations? You take the vote.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for approval of first reading of bylaw 1005?
Motion to approve bylaw 1005, first reading?
Support.
Ms. Schottke, do you want to tell us about it?
Sure, yeah, this one really was primarily language cleanup, so the first sentence was removed from the original policy, and then just some general language regarding board duties was added to this one.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, take the vote.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion for approval of the first reading of bylaw 1015?
Motion for approval of bylaw 1015, first reading?
Support. All right, this policy was, is the district mission statement, so really no substantive changes, except that we eliminated what was in the parentheses, which was a little confusing, so it didn't really change the policy by any way, except to clean it up, make it easier to read.
Any comments, concerns? Take the vote.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion for approval of first reading bylaw 1020.
Motion to approve bylaw 1020, first reading?
Support.
All right, this policy, bylaws, also goes along with the previous policy that stated that we simply removed what was in parentheses, which was stating, I believe, the number of two-thirds vote, which equates to majority in the board, so just clean up.
Questions? Go ahead.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion for approval of first reading of bylaw 1032.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, policy 1032, duties in governing policies. There was just some moving around of content, so the section on board powers was removed as it was already covered in policy 1005.
Any questions? Go ahead.
All right, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And a motion for first reading of bylaw 1040.
Motion to approve bylaw 1040, first reading?
Support.
All right, this is just going to go through for approval, there were no changes to this policy. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I believe you're going to make a motion to table?
Yeah, I will make a motion to table bylaw 1150 board officers for further review at the Ad Hoc Policy May Committee meeting.
Support for that motion?
Support.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have to approve the elimination of those other policies, or it's just to be noted, we have to approve the elimination? Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the elimination of bylaw 1001, bylaw 1010, and bylaw 1152?
So moved.
Support for that?
In second.
Any concerns, questions?
So again, these are just taking care of what you just...
Correct, they've all been reincorporated into other policies, yep. Okay, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Schottke, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Faub?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Want to thank the committee and thank Ms. Pitts in particular for all the work she's doing, so.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
First of all, who else is on the Ad Hoc Policy Committee?
Ms. Slade and Mr. Ross and myself, and Dennis Cherry.
You guys are having a lot of fun, I can tell.
It's always a lot of fun.
Geez, man, I should have, I should have really listened up and put my hand up. Now, I want to thank you guys, because I know it's tedious, it's so amazing, because we kept getting surprised over all these years that, you know, we've been on the board, so.
Feels good.
It's nice to have this, it feels like at least we can take ownership of our own policies, so. Secondly, I, I don't know if this is appropriate, the board officers, and anything related to board, is it possible if we have our first reading in work sessions to just have, you know, more length of time, or if we plan to have a longer discussion?
On the one we pulled in particular, or on all of them?
No, only on the ones related to, because these have, these have been often very misunderstood, and it would be nice to make sure that, not so much for review of the policy and voting, but to make sure that everybody understands those roles.
So, just to be clear, you would like the
Board.
First reading of 1150?
Yes.
Okay.
To happen, to happen with, not necessarily when, but that it, that it be done when we plan to have more time to discuss, okay.
Makes sense? Yeah? Yeah, there's some history around that, that's why I had it pulled, because I was sick at that meeting, and.
And there's, yeah, there's just a lot of, yeah, there have been a lot of historical problems with that policy, so.
Good advice, thank you.
Dr. Baker, I believe you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping minus the purchasing agenda and the donations.
We have support for that motion?
Support.
Let's take the vote.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross. Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
President Faal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I make a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
Support for that motion?
Support.
So I just wanted to, we kind of moved that to action items, and I wanted to just make it present that we keep that in action items.
Right.
Yeah, so, anyway, I don't have any particular concerns about that, but if anybody else does for purchasing agenda, there is a lot happening in regard to beginning of spending money on the bond, and I think that we should make sure that we're.
Appreciate that, Dr. Baker. Everybody hear that? He's mumbling a little bit.
No, he was.
Usually I'm not, so, no, I wanted to just make sure that as we move into beginning to spend funds on the bonds, the purchasing agenda is going to pick up to be things that are not necessarily routine, and I know that we often get asked in the community what's happening with buildings, et cetera, and it would be, I wanted to make sure that we, we keep that as an action item, and not a consent agenda grouping, so.
There's no particular questions about this purchasing agenda? Deliberations or concerns? Okay, Ms. Shatky, take the vote.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
President Faal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no discussion items, do we?
We have one more item that we're, the donations.
Oh!
So I'd like to make a motion, I don't know if we can do it separately, the donation, there were two separate donations, again, I wanted to note the significant donations that were supported by the Finance Committee, particularly the early warning system secondary schools grant, so, motion to approve the Stillcase Foundation schools grant, support. And then, actually, I did, Superintendent, can you just, just to remind people, because I thought it was, it's really significant, I think it, it does a lot towards discussing changes that we need to address, so.
So there, there's actually two donations here, Dr. Baker, that we may want to discuss, and Mary Jo is going to come forward, because it's also the Grand Rapids Community Foundation.
Right, yes.
It's a pretty large fund, donation, so we'll do them both at one time, since it's over a million dollars, just for the record.
Well, I'm encouraged to share with you the donation that Tony referenced, the Stillcase Foundation, for 750,000 over three years, and it is in support of an early warning system, which is a data dashboard that's provided for teachers on a regular and frequent basis to look at student data based on attendance, behavior, and academic achievement. This is to provide information, as well as time for teachers to collaborate and plan interventions in order to intervene with students who need additional support to be successful and be ready to graduate and college and career ready. Johns Hopkins will be working with us, they will come in and help build the capacity of our system, our teachers, our principals, and two lead facilitators who will help ensure that this is instituted in the way that it was expected and planned. They've been doing this work across the country, in fact, they are the authors of this program, so it's well researched, well evidenced that it is successful. It simply builds upon what we've already been doing as a district with MIDA, Dr. Gunnel had done an opportunity index, and had that piloted in the district in a middle school, and then with Dr. Gorman's work around the three priorities. So it's all connected, and it builds on our synergy system. Johns Hopkins came in and took a look at that system, and said it's an excellent system to build a data dashboard. All the pieces are there.
Questions for Ms. Coleman?
May I ask, this is going to be available to teachers?
Yes, this is for teachers.
And the teachers then would recognize, according to this data, who of their students might need?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do you want the second grant? The second grant is a continuation, and I'm really excited to say, after seven years, it's another grant from the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, which my hat really goes off to them for being so committed to our students, our families, and our, in our district, and you as a board, that they continue the award of $500,000. For that grant, we have three college career coordinators who have certainly made a difference at Harrison, Westwood, and Union High School, as well as the continued support of the ASCD faculty. ASCD is a curriculum and development system that's known nationally, and the faculty come here and support our teachers with the implementation of the three big priorities, the standards, the backward mapping, and then the assessment literacy.
Great. It's fantastic, thank you for
Very good.
drawing your attention to them. So on the superintendent's report, but.
Should I make the motion for the two together? Is that appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for the donations.
Any further questions, concerns, deliberations? The vote.
Reverend Mathias.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Ms. Shatky, yes. Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Baker.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
President Faal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no discussion items, public comment? We have a couple of cards here.
Bring it up.
But I'd like to invite up April Postma, please.
That's all right, thank you so much, that's okay, thank you.
Ms. Postma, just for the record, if you could just state your name, and you have three minutes, and we'll give you a one-minute warning.
Sounds good. Before I begin, though, I do want to say I do have a picture of my daughter in the back, just to kind of, I don't know, make it personal. My name is April Postma. I am here on behalf of my daughter, and every childhood needs a voice in the matter of extended school, school year. My daughter has a severe cognitive impairment, school label. Medically, she has autism and a rare syndrome called Phalanx McDermid Syndrome. She is in an autism classroom, and after much advocacy, we were able to get her, get her approved for 15 days. I am grateful for those 15 days, but the autism classrooms at Pine Grove will be closed for the summer, she'll be placed in a severe cognitive impairment class. I honestly have no issue with that. My concern is that autistic children are not getting an extended school because of a warped policy based on faulty data. My daughter was originally denied extended school year. A few days later, I called Principal Keith, which, he was very amazing, I think he's here today. A few days later, I called Principal Keith at Pine Grove, and he stated to me that children only under the severe cognitive impairment and severe multiple impairment programs are protected, and get the extended year, school year, because it's built into their program. It was implied that just because my daughter is in autism classroom, that it's not needed. To me, this is discrimination based on programs. I would like to see peer reviews showing that loss of IP goals after only two weeks Christmas break is an adequate time to determine if these kids will regress during the summer break. In reference to guidance of the extended school year services in Section 5.2, determination of need of extended school year services cannot be based on a formula. Not possible to develop a formula, or, as I quote, "It is not possible to develop a formula that can take into account the unique needs of all the students with disabilities in the state of Michigan. Any formula by its nature will inadvertently exclude someone from appropriate consideration of ESY services. My child has potential, all of our children do. The question is, will you help protect the rights of these at-risk children, to help them achieve and succeed at the most simple tasks, to be, to simple tasks to begin, or being productive in society? I implore you to attend Pine Grove, Lincoln, or any other school like those, observe these autism classrooms, speak with the teachers, therapists, and interact with the students to see how significant their needs are for yourself. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Donaldson, can you please come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, I'm Christina Donaldson, and I am here in support of special education and the families that are underserved and not underrepresented. I just want to reiterate that I did have a child in GRPS, and I no longer do, and a lot of that is due to some of the issues that special education continues to face. So I just wanted to come and once again, just encourage you all to go and visit the schools yourself, as this mother just stated, and see for yourselves, so that you can properly advocate and make sure that the right things are being done, and that the parents are being told, what they should be told in a timely manner, and in a timely fashion, and not given indirect answers and responses, never a direct response to their questions and concerns when they're facing them, similar to what you guys have experienced with the interview with Laura Lomore, just not giving direct answers to very serious matters that are of the heart, our kids. So again, talk to the teachers yourselves, see if those teachers are on board like they say that they are, and I would encourage you to do that. Again, visit those schools, and just continue to look into this matter, and not let it fall back off of your agenda, because it's no longer being talked about, or no longer deemed a valuable issue for you guys. And just keep it in mind, a community that leaves out even one child or student is not a community at all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Cheryl Lopez, can you come forward, please?
Hello.
Hello.
Bonjour, Annie. Cheryl, indigenous cost. My name is Nandodam, Sioux State Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians, Nandodah Bandagwes, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Nandonjapa. What I said was that my name is Cheryl Lopez, that I was born in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I belong to the Sioux State Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians, and I also work here in Grand Rapids, pub, public schools, with a Native American education program. So tonight, I'm addressing you just to talk about our program, our program successes. We've had a lot of community support for us over the last years, and especially the last week, but we want to say that we are grateful to have the program, with that addresses the cultural needs of especially urban Native Americans. We are a little isolated from the tribe, so having the public schools support our program, and to be able to offer programs that encourages kids to know about their culture through our after-school programs, that they learn dancing and singing and their cultural piece. We are right now prepping for our powwow at Union High School. It's open to everyone on May 13th. It's from 12 to 5 o'clock, so I want to make you guys aware of that. And so, so thank you for your time, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak about our program, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie Norris, can you come forward, please?
Annie, bonjour. My name is Jeannie Norris, I am a member of the Little Traversway Bands of Wadawas Indians, and I am also a therapist here in Grand Rapids at Cherry Health. I've been living in Grand Rapids for about five and a half years, and I just wanted to come and speak in support of the Native American Community Service Program, and all the beautiful things that it does offer our community. I believe it's super important for our children, for our youth, from all different tribes, to be able to come together and have a place where we can learn about our culture, learn about our language, which has been almost lost. I wish I could say my name and the language like Michelle did so eloquently, but I have not been able to incorporate that into my life, and I want my daughter to be able to do so when she gets older. They have many beautiful teachings to our children, that not only teach about our culture and about who we are, but about how we respect others, and how we work with others. Our Seven Grandfather teachings are so important, and they're so beautifully and elegantly spoken that our children learn how to treat others, and how to grow up to be good humans, good citizens, and be connected with our people, with our community. Like Michelle said, our community is kind of urban natives, so we're kind of not always able to be connected with our tribe. My tribe is in Harbor Springs, Michigan, so I don't get to utilize all those services. We also have children who are descendants, right now, my child is a descendant, and so it's important for our children, even who are descendants, and maybe not be considered that native quantum, to be able to know still about who we are, and about our culture. And that program, the Native Education Program, gives us that opportunity and that ability for those kids to, to still connect with other children like them, and I think it's so important for it to continue, and I'm really glad that it is, so, thank you very much. Luque.
Stacy Stout, can you come forward, please?
Hello, I'm excited to be here tonight. Hi, hello, a lot of friends at the table, so, thank you for having me be here tonight. I'm Stacy Stout, a GRPS parent, Grand Rapids resident voter. I'm out of town, so I already voted for the millage tomorrow, so I hope that passes. Today I got to march with Day Without an Immigrant with my second grader that goes to C.A. Frost, and we got to talk about immigration, and the horrific policies that we have now, and when her legs started to hurt, because it was a four-hour walk. I got to talk to her about Cesar Chavez and his march, and all the sacrifices of our people, of both ancestors, because before we were Mexicans, we were indigenous. And so I spoke with her a little bit about her Mexica ancestry, and also her Ojibwe ancestry from, from this land, the original Grand Rapids Indians, the land on which you are now, and how important it is that she learned her language, because that's how we pray, how important to learn the Seven Grandfather teachings, the medicine wheel, and all of that is wellness, and so I believe in education. I used to work for y'all, right? I believe in education. I worked in higher education at Grand Valley. I was education director at the Hispanic Center for seven years. I worked at an international foundation that focused on early education. I believe in education, it's important. But just like numbers and math testing that's going on this week and all of that, what's important to me is that she's well-rounded. So every week I send her to the Native American Education Program at straight school, not for math and reading, although they do that with her, but so she can see herself for but so she can see herself for a few hours a week in the staff, in the language, in the decor, and so she can learn about herself, right? There's a reason why they don't want us to read our history books in Arizona, and they banned them, right? It's because there's power in our history, and I want my daughter to be powerful. Some of y'all know me, right? She's gonna be even worse. And it's powerful, so I just want to thank you for your support, I invite you not just to the powwow, but to really get on the floor with these children and learn from them. As many of you know from Kids Speak, right, how powerful and how these children get it, they are our best teachers, and we need to listen to them more, and so I sent them there for that, and it's, and I would, it's just, it would be very powerful, um, when I worked at the Hispanic Center, thank you, when I worked at the Hispanic Center, I worked with kids, um, transitioning out of gang life, Latinos mainly, and, um, part of the key to that curriculum was teaching them about their indigenous roots and how powerful they are. Because there's a reason why we're not taught it in all the curriculums. And so I would just ask for your support, and thank you for those that reached out, um, and those that I've seen at different functions and just want to continue that support, and if there's anything I can do, I'm, I'm always here. I support GRPS, um, very strongly, so, I do want to give a shout-out to John Hemholt, who's just been an incredible ally in this, in a, in an age of allies, a buzz term, and so is racial equity, John is, is, is about it. So I just wanted to thank John Hemholt and, um, GRPS, and also the, the native staff that worked so hard for our children, so, thank you for all that you do. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Superintendent comments?
No comment.
Ms. Schottke?
Just please, please get out and use your voice tomorrow, get to the polls, and, um, we're looking forward to seeing what the evening brings.
Yeah, I agree for sure that we need to support this, um, day tomorrow, being out, um, this, uh, the president, um, referred to, President Foll referred to, uh, this being Labor Day at the beginning of the meeting, and in most of the part of the world it is, um, and so this is International Labor Day, and I won't do the, the Chicago history, and, but May first, eighteen eighty-six, there was a major event that led to this, um, worldwide celebration. Also, I think it was, we had, I stopped by my son's school, Central High School today, uh, on day without immigrants, and, um, the, it certainly is, the, the significance of the groups of people that make up Grand Rapids Public Schools is very well noted, um, and, um, and, you know, who we are and how we do education, and, you know, I agree, um, that we, so it's, uh, was, uh, an, an important day to, uh, to be thinking about where we're at in our history, so, thanks.
No comment. I echo what everyone else has said. Reverend Matthias?
Yeah, I just appreciate, uh, the parents' comments, and, and again, the work that the district is doing and moving, you know, not only achievement, but the hard work of decision-making and, and how it, uh, becomes equitable, so I appreciate the work that you all do as well.
No comment.
I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge, uh, the students speak, kids speak, kids speak? I was there, although, I didn't tell Julia I was going to be there, so, I sat in the audience with everybody else, but, I was so amazed at these kids, and I was especially proud of, uh, Gabrielle over there, which is not here tonight, but she read a poem about, uh, being a minority, and the whole morning was just wonderful, I was so impressed with these kids.
Dr. Flores?
Well, I'm duty-bound to, um, to advocate, and, um, a few meetings ago, um, I asked about rationale why we were eliminating the Native American Program Director position, and that was kind of sidestepped or put aside, and, you know, Native Americans, American Indians, owned this land before this land became the United States of America. And I was with my brothers and sisters last week, uh, at the Gunlake, Gunlake Tribe, and they are, you know, making tremendous progress, I'm so proud of them. They will have an expansion program soon that doubles the size of their casino. And economic development has led these people to a new height, to a new promise, they're, they have a gas station now, noonday, right next to the casino, or across the street from the casino. They have a government complex, they will have, uh, charter schools in the future, I'm sure, because these people are moving forward with a, with a sense of, of vision and, and a hope for their children. And I would hope that, in the light of that, as I advocate, that we would not only hear some rationale from our superintendent about eliminating this position, that I think should not be eliminated. In fact, we need to embrace our, our indigenous history, our Hispanic history, our African-American history, and make that an integral part of our curriculum, and make sure that it, it, it is not foreshadowed by a European perspective about who we are, especially in light of the demographics of this district. So, on an advocacy note, I would hope that that would be forthcoming from the leadership of this group, and that, uh, and that we, we give it the amount of attention that it needs. Secondly, today was May Day, many immigrants chose not to, to go to school, so that they could make a statement, and so they could advance equitable treatment in the United States of America by all of the powers, including Donald Trump, our president. I received at least two, um, emails that said that their, their students, their children, uh, were promised reprisals if they did not come to school. I would hope that we, as a district, our leadership, advances some action to encourage our teachers and our staff not to make statements that suggest reprisals for not coming to school in light of this activist movement. I thank God that I can speak the English that is needed to address this issue, and that I am on this board today to do this, thank you.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, just, um, and regarding, uh, extended, um, school year issue, I think I, I think it is pretty important that, as a board, we do keep ourselves, uh, abreast, and, uh, maybe appropriate, uh, Reverend Matthias to ask for an update, uh, just to, you know, as far as the progress and process related to this at an academic achievement, um, calendar possibly, I just think it's, uh, important issue that obviously as a district we're doing our best to, to balance and do what's best for children, but I do think the complexities do warrant some regular attention, I guess, to, to kind of keep an eye on what's what, and to help us all understand as, um, district leaders, um, that things are moving appropriately, I suppose, so I guess I did ask you to make a note and see if, um, we can have that, uh, update on Academic Achievement Committee, Committee meeting. Other than that, no comment, thank you.
Um, I just want to encourage everybody to get out and vote, this is a, this is one tool that's, uh, a control, local control on how we fund our schools, and we are actualizing it, using it, please get out and vote. I want to encourage everybody to attend our State of the Schools, there are so many exciting things going on, and I'll be eager to hear about them and to celebrate them. I want to thank our superintendent for speaking at the Student Advancement Foundation Mind Chair, we had many people there, and, um, you light up the room, you, it was, it was awesome, your leadership and the level of support this community has for our schools under your leadership is remarkable, and I'm very grateful for that. I want to express my support for the native programs, I was, um, in Toronto last fall, and I was so moved to see that the Toronto Public Schools begin every school day, making an announcement, uh, about the original treaty on the land that was given, and that sense of awareness and sense of place, and where we came from and who we are was so profound to me. And, um, at Grand Rapids Public Schools, we are so about equity and bringing to the fore the history that is shoved under so often in our country, and appreciate our superintendent and everybody that is leading in that equity, so, thank you, and with that, meeting adjourned.